Thank you, Leah. I've got one little click I have to do there. Thank you. I call this meeting to order of the City Council for the City of Gross Point Park. Clerk Bligh-Hut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Present.
Reed.
Here.
McKenna.
Here.
Hodge.
Here.
Robson.
Here.
Fluid.
Here.
And Mayor Denner.
Here. Thank you. This is Flag Day, so please join me, as we always do, in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Thank you. The first item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Council, you have the consent agenda before you. It includes minutes from May 6th to May 10th, the budget amendment for fiscal year 2021, approval of a corrective action plan related to pension, and approval of our PATS service agreement. The finance report, which was in the original consent agenda, will be dealt with as a separate agenda item later in the meeting, per council request. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's moved.
Support?
Or.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor.
Yes.
One quick thing. On the regular council meeting agenda, page six, unfinished business, council comments. Councilman Rayland requested for clarification. The second paragraph.
Yeah, we can't, at this point, Mayor Pretten, we really can't adjust the minutes because they were, they're in the consent agenda. We have to, I think, go up or down.
No discussion?
If there's a typo of sorts, I would suggest you maybe forward that to the clerk.
I can do that. Thank you.
With that, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Hodge.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Move on to public comment agenda items. Leah, do we have anyone? I'll turn this over to the first city manager for any written public comment, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So I do have two written public comments for you tonight. The first is from Charles Doherty of Barrington. Good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to provide comment and agenda item 8.1, four-way traffic stop sign discussion. My family and I live on the corner of Avondale and Barrington Roads and have recently been in contact with the concerns of traffic speeds on Avondale Road. I personally spend a lot of time walking and biking in GPP and have long noticed the lack of stop signs on many of our east-west streets. I often witness vehicles that seem to be driving in excess of the speed limit along these roads as well as distracted driving. I feel this has introduced a safety issue within our community. As stated, we have reached out to the city regarding this issue and have received support in the form of a radar trailer, as well as public safety officers that watch traffic on Avondale. These methods have proven to be highly effective in calming traffic speeds on Avondale specifically, but I do not view these solutions as long-term proactive solutions. In addition to high-speed vehicle traffic, we also lack safe crosswalks on these streets. I personally feel that the placement of four-way stop signs will provide a proactive method to calm traffic on our east-west streets and provide safe places for pedestrian traffic to cross. I appreciate your consideration on this topic and hope that you will take the safety of citizens with our community in your discussion on this topic. This public comment comes from Andrea Doherty of Barrington. We live in a very active community of walkers, joggers, cyclists, and playing children. The absence of stop signs on Avondale makes every intersection dangerous for our community. When the Department of Public Safety deployed a speed trailer on Avondale, I noticed a considerable difference in how many speeding vehicles pass through this intersection. When the trailer was removed, the issue picked back up again. This suggests that stop signs will help mitigate speeding on Avondale because the intersection at Barrington and Avondale sees heavy traffic going to and coming from Alter, as well as people traveling down Barrington to get to Windmill Point Park. A stop sign at the intersection of Barrington and Avondale would go a long way in making sure our community members and children are safe. Additionally, we are a walking school district with specific safe routes to school, while the intersections down Westchester have been painted and established as a school crossing with signage. There are no four-way stops to help students cross safely. Our students rely on these designated routes to their school to be safe. There is no rationale for not installing stop signs that would outweigh the added safety. We all benefit if you vote yes for this necessary addition to our community. Please vote to add stop signs to Avondale and Barrington, Westchester and Avondale, Westchester and Fairfax, and Somerset and St. Paul. Mayor Denner, those are my written public comments.
Okay, do we have anyone in the queue for verbal comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. I do currently have one resident in the queue, so I'm going to share the three-minute timer. And then, Brian, if you will please state your full name and city of residency for the record, please go ahead.
Thank you, Leah. I'm Brian Vosberg, resident of Gross Point Park. And I wanted to thank council for discussing the discussion about home demolitions. And I would add to it not just home demolitions, but all demolitions in the city. I live just a block away with, I can see from my porch, the home that was demolished on Lake Point Street. I was absolutely appalled at that demolition of how unsafe it was, both the immediate safety, there was zero fencing at the site. When I walked by there to go pick up my child from school, there was, I walked around the entire site within just feet of the demolition site, and there was nobody that stopped me at all. And there's, of course, no barriers, no fencing of any type at all. And so I'm asking that council implement strong rules and regulations about safety, both the immediate safety, as well as consider the long-term safety. These demolitions, because of the age of our housing stock in the city, have lead paint in them, and there's no way to effectively abate the lead out of these structures before demolishing them. And so we need strong abatement measures to help control lead dust. But we also need to notify residents that these demolitions are going to be happening. Nobody, none of my neighbors knew that the demolition of Janet's Lunch was going to be happening. None of us knew that the demolition of the house on Lake Point was going to be happening. Just trucks showed up out of nowhere, and the demolition happened. So people had children outside playing or had plans to play outside. They had plans to go walk, had plans to go walk to school. And then, all of a sudden, there's a building being demolished and no idea that that was happening, and seemingly very little in the way of safety protocols, both, again, short-term or the immediate demolition, but also the long-term impacts, and also notification and education to residents of what to do when there has been lead dust released into the, into the air, because inevitably that will happen despite the best efforts of demolition contractor to contain that dust as best as possible. Lead dust will still travel to neighboring properties. And so those property owners need to know about that in advance. They also need to know what are the proper safety protocols to clean that. It has very serious impacts, as we know, unfortunately, from Flint, on the long-term health of children. And many times, those health impacts are permanent and irreversible. So thank you for considering this, and I look forward to hopefully very strong rules and regulations that the city implements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Denner, I have no further public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Leah. With that, we'll close public comment agenda items and move on to the manager's report. City Manager Seisland.
Thank you, Mayor Denner, and members of city council. So before you tonight, I have an update regarding activities and events within Gross Point Park, and I'll run through a couple of them with you. I hate to do this, but I know Director Gerald will also talk about this, but he's going to be hosting his first Coffee with the Cop tomorrow. That'll be the public safety department's first one, and it'll be at the Tompkins Center at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. This informal event, no agendas or speeches, just conversation with our public safety officers, and I hope to see you there. Public safety Facebook page, I'm excited to announce that the public safety department now has a public Facebook page. I'm very excited for the opportunity to showcase what officers do on a day-to-day basis, promote safety through education, feedback to the community, and maybe even pictures of saving a kitten. So that's the goal with that. The Gross Point Park Business Association, within the last month, it was officially launched, and this was started by building cleaners owner Joe Habeka. He and his fellow directors have included Mac Avenue, Charlevoy, Kirchvoll, and Jefferson in the representation. As were prior to, it was just mainly on Kirchvoll. So it's nice to see a good group of the entire business district within Gross Point Park. The group will meet a couple times in the year, work with the local businesses in the city to promote GPP outside of Gross Point, and continue to find ways to attract all visitors. If you have not followed them, please visit on their Facebook, Instagram, or website at visittheparkgp.com. And then I will touch on Tifa in the commission and committee reports. Tifa tree trimming. City Forester Brian Coulter has been coordinating with Safetree for tree trimming along sidewalks, street clearance, and correcting the street canopy in the Tifa District. At this time, about 500 trees have been worked on at Wayburn, Maryland, and Lake Point, and more work will continue within the residential district before we look to the commercial. Happy to announce in our social district, the Charlevoy is now the newest member of the GPP Social District, bringing our total to eight participating businesses, and I know a couple of those businesses were participating with residents on Saturday for the summer boogie night. So that was fantastic to see. DTE is going to be working on Kirchvoll in the business district for the next week and a half, up to two weeks. Public Works is monitoring restoration, ensuring streets are posted properly for no parking to allow room for the water trucks that are coming through. DTE has went through a second round of reseeding within the last week, and we are monitoring at this time. I would ask if you have any restoration concerns regarding gas, to either call the main hotline of DTE, of 270-9240, or also on our city website. We do have the supervisors Monica Garagiola or Brian Valrants of DTE. DTE as well is still working on tree work within the community. They're approximately about 75% done at this time. The majority of their work is going to be around Jefferson and City Hall in that area. And so what they're doing right now is they're actually clearing any trees that are under the lines or near it where, you know, they could cause damage, you know, and lose power. One of the things we have been told by DT, however, is that we have had a couple of concerns that have come to the city and to DT regarding refusal of DTE trim work. I would highly suggest, you know, before you do so, to please contact our city forester or our DT tree contact, Greg Bario, for any concerns that you may have, because, you know, as much as at times, you know, it may not look as pretty, but it's also going to help in electric reliability as we come into more summer and fall storms as we go ahead. So I'll do it slowly. It is on the city website, too, but this is the DTE tree contact. His name is Greg Bario. His phone number is 313-570-2532. And as well, you know, if you can't get any answer from him, please contact Brian Coulter or city forester, who will be reaching out as well to him. And then if you don't get any answer from the DT guests, I'd please reach out to our DPW supervisors, Pat Thomas or Tom Jenny. We've had some changes in the building department. At this time, our new building official Terry Brennan is working Tuesdays through Thursdays in Gross Point Park and some plan review on Fridays. The city is contracted with the same plumbing, mechanical, and electrical inspector of the shores, woods, and farms. He works for McKenna Associates. Terry and I are currently in review of building department operations with staff, and we'll be looking to update permits, fees, code enforcement, et cetera, in the coming weeks. And as part of that, in your agenda tonight is a fee schedule that I would like council to consider for adoption. And McKenna, right now, is acting as our plan review for the city. And in the future, look for a planning discussion selection, possible selection by council in the coming months for a planning firm for those services. Recycling. Gross Point Farms, Shores, City and Park are starting discussions regarding recycling services as our current contract with Green for Life expires in the fall. An updated request for proposals with the help of Resource Recycling Systems will be going out soon for bid. And then updates regarding the Public Works Building and City Hall Building. I updated the Tifa at their last meeting, but we've had, there's been a material shortage, especially steel. So the timeline for construction of DPW is adjusted to start later than expected. We're hoping for a late summer start for the building to go upright, but underground work can be done beforehand. And at a future council meeting, we'll bring through your view and consideration of approval to vacate portions of the alley in Wayburn and the lease of the DPW building. City Hall Building, the roof and window construction should start probably within the next two weeks. I've actually been looking with our building department right now at the wood trim and such, so I know it's moving along. And as well, Spicer's looking at HVAC, ceiling, and lighting upgrade bids, which will be going out soon. Mayor Denner, that is my recollection of the manager's report, and be happy to answer any questions, comments, or discussion.
Do you have any questions for the city manager, comments? Councilmember McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Thank you, City Manager Seisland. I just wanted to get clarity of one, two things about DTE. One of the issues that residents had raised concerns about was the lack of notification when they were coming to do tree trimming. And I had asked DTE if they could provide a schedule that shows where they will be and when. Unfortunately, I never received that. The city, on the other hand, is doing great in terms of telling us where they are going to be. So I appreciate that. So is there, if there's any way to get that information and share it with the residents, I think that would be extremely helpful. I'd also asked DT about an FAQ sheet. We did get some information at our homes, but I think specific to the tree trimming, there's still some confusion on that. And then also, any update on the, I'm sorry, were you going to say something?
Yeah, two points I can briefly make. I was talking with DT today about those precisely. I did receive an FAQ, and I did ask, there's additional clarification on there that, you know, good questions that residents would be asking, so DT will be updating that. In regards to a schedule, that's something I can add to my discussion with them to see if we can do something about that.
Great. Then I wanted to just bring up our lovely term, the bollards. I don't know if you have any further updates as it relates to those.
As far as I know, I know Public Works has been taking that task on. You know, I would ask again if anybody in the community has had a bollard that they're concerned about, or they're too large, to please contact Monica Garagiola or Brian Valrants of DTE for the gas. We do have their contact information on the city website and/or contact Public Works, and they can forward you as well to those, to Monica or Brian. As far as I know, there have been a couple instances within GPP where there was some concern, and DT did correct those. So, you know, if you can just let us know absolutely where those are at, we will follow up with DT.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Fluid.
Thank you. So you said that the city forester will be working on regular tree trimming and corrective, I believe, tree trimming in the Tifa District. But we have gotten those complaints from other parts of the city. There was a resident who sent in pictures of several trees along Kirchvoll that do look pretty terrible. So is that going to be happening, that corrective trimming going to be happening outside the Tifa as well?
So there's two different things there. So, you know, one of the items that the Tifa Committee wanted us to use in the residential line item of our budget is, you know, we've discussed tree work, and, you know, finally, Brian Coulter was able to get a good contractor that was able to come in. It's been long overdue in that Tifa area for canopy, sidewalk clearance, and others. So that's kind of separate from DTE. That's something that he does coordinate with other contractors for other areas in the city to do corrective tree trimming. However, it was something that the Tifa wanted to see more done in their district, and so that's why you're seeing quite an aggressive approach in the Tifa District. In regards to DTE, I think I recall the exact email you're talking about, too. I did share that with their government relations rep, especially those that looked even worse than a Charlie Brown tree, where they just kind of shaved the top and, you know, there was nothing left. And, you know, at that time, just clear the tree at that point. I mean, why else would it be there? So they have assured me that they will be doing so, but that's something our city forester is going around to and checking. So if there's anything that you see like that or can notify, please let us know, and, you know, we'll follow up with Greg Bario or Brian Coulter.
So the city is actually going to be compiling a list of areas where some corrective trimming, once DTE is done, that corrective trimming actually needs to be dealt with?
Brian Coulter has been doing that so far. He's been out looking at some of those DTE areas, and especially in the Tifa District, that definitely has taken place because there is a couple that just need to be trimmed a little more and are corrected. But, you know, he is a one-man operation, so obviously, if there's any that you see of concern, I would suggest you forward that on to Brian Coulter, and he can certainly follow up with DTE.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mayor Pretten Robson.
Just following up on DTE. Nick and staff meet with DTE every Wednesday and discuss concerns and what have you. They are working, probably not at the pace we want them to, but they are trying to work with us. And Nick, there might be a possibility where they might be hosting a town hall for residents. There is that consideration, correct?
So initially, talking with DTE, one of the areas that they actually did at the start of the gas restoration project, this might have been back in 2018. They had a truck in area over at Windmill Point Park where they served hot dogs and, you know, just let residents know what the project was going to be. That is something that I have humbly requested to DTE for their consideration to provide kind of a outdoor workshop in a way. It's not going to be, you know, a public feedback and forth, but be more so, you know, having some booths that could talk about gas and why it's so important and infrastructure upgrades there, electric reliability in trees for updating those poles, and as well as tree trimming to understand, you know, why they did such. It's something that, you know, frankly, if I'm looking as a resident or, you know, looking on DT, there's so much information. It gets a little confusing to understand where I should go or why they're doing so. And so I have put in that request to DTE. They are, their employees are, their corporate office employees are still on lockdown right now with COVID, so a lot of them are at home. But it's something that they could consider maybe in the summer or fall.
Okay.
And so I will be pushing for them to do so.
Okay, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. DTE is a hot topic. On the restoration part, I have observed, and I've heard from people as well, the reseeding has occurred. As a city, if we could put out some communications on our Facebook page, reminding people to water, because if you water, it will grow. But even with the reseeding, I've seen some areas in the median, you know, the part between the sidewalk and the street that aren't getting watered. So we're going to be left with weeds.
And that's one area, and thank you, Councilmember Reed, for that, that we have discussed with DT quite extensively, especially regarding street postings. We were finding at times that cars were getting watered more than the grass. And so that is why we have requested DTE that they at least post the streets, you know, so residents can know that they're going to be, you know, coming in the area. We've even helped coordinate with street sweeping, so that we'll sweep the street first, and then DT comes in after and waters. But I think that's a great suggestion as well. Obviously, we'd like DT to take responsibility for their watering, but also we can put out that friendly reminder just to help, obviously, get that grass growing with the warm weather, except for.
Yeah. Yeah, once or twice a week is not going to do it, so I think we need to encourage the residents to do it for their sake and for everybody's.
Sounds good.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Sorry to pile on the DTE issue, but I do have, I think, a couple of additional items to add. I do have the honor of working with DTE for many years in my day job, and what I was seeing here was not in alignment with a strong community-minded culture that I know them to be. So I did reach out to some of those contacts that I have, and they did reinforce that they want to really advance their caring and efficient culture. That's the words they used. And they wanted to also point out that they do use a Six Sigma Problem-Solving Platform. So from there, they've taken each of these issues, the seeding, the concrete driveway pours, et cetera, and put them through that problem-solving process. So the residents should be seeing changes, if not already, very soon with the seeding and watering. They do want to put the trucks through. They even have somebody walking with a hose through to do that. The concrete driveway pours, they've rethought that whole notification process, so it doesn't happen inappropriately. The pole replacements that they're doing, those will be stored in a way that doesn't destroy new lawn. The bollards, they're working to mitigate their impact. They can't eliminate them because they're required by law. With that said, they are sensitive to the need to try to mask them in some way. We also talked about the contractually provided for escrow dollars that they have for any outstanding concerns that extend beyond the contract period. And they really wanted to fervently commit themselves to avoiding the need for ever having to use that. So I think that they know they're on notice at the moment. They do want to continue demonstrating their good corporate citizenship and their community partnerships. We talked about a number of goodwill things that they'd be willing to consider. Some examples of that include community events support. They can't do that till after October, when they can do in-person events again. They would like to look at donating supplies, some of which could include recycling containers. So Member Fluid, that's something we can discuss at the Sustainability Committee meeting later this week. They also are looking at assessing projects for consideration by the DTE Foundation, one of which we're discussing could be quite exciting if it advances, so I'll keep you all posted on that. And then they're really interested in getting involved in the community and supporting and joining various organizations, including the Gross Points, Harper Woods, and AAACP, so they can further their commitment to DEI. So I did facilitate that introduction as well. And perhaps, Member Rayland, that's something you can include, and you had a hot committee, too. So my sense after meeting with them was that we're headed in the right direction and would really encourage residents to get their concerns heard, because I do believe they're in a responsive mode now that we've had this intervention. So I thank them for that, and I thank the administration for staying on top of it as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Rayland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't sure if there was a Parks and Rec meeting or not, Laurie. Will you be updating? So Nick, can you share any updates on the dog park? If there is any.
My bad, I double muted myself. So in relation to the dog park, I did talk with Park Director Chad Craig today. There is a delay on the fencing right now, and that's why we're waiting on that at the moment. The concrete pad has been poured. I understand that Becker was over and sodding around that pad, and that we should start to see some preliminary plantings within the next few weeks here. And so at this time, that's my most recent update, and then I don't want to steal Councilmember Reed's thunder, but I know there was discussion regarding the permit, and that, I shouldn't say permit, but the application and that process. And I believe they're having a meeting at the end of the month or early July, but I'll let Councilmember Reed confirm that for me.
Our next meeting, September 1st, as of right now, I don't think we have one on the calendar.
Oh, I'm thinking Marina. That's what it was.
Marina is coming up.
Marina, we're going to cover it in a bit.
Thank you, thank you. And then, how long has the DTE project been going on in the park? It's been 16 months, or maybe longer?
Give me one second. It's probably been.
I don't need an exact.
It's been since summer of 2018.
Okay, all right. So it seems like it's well past adding love and care at this point. I appreciate their sentiment, but it's a little BS to come in at the end and then say, hey, we really want to have good customer service. It's been going on for a while.
In response to that, I think the reason that we're so focused on it right now are some of the the natural challenges of doing a good job in the northwest sector. Those streets are tight. The houses are tight. The area between the sidewalk and the curb is tight. And I think that the challenges in that neighborhood were greater than maybe perhaps DTE had planned for, and I think that's why we've got a lot of focus on it now.
Yeah, it seems like.
It went a lot more smoothly in some of the other neighborhoods.
Yeah, it seems like they tried to do too much too fast. Rather than take care of what they did, they just kept going, and that delayed everything else. So it'd be, I know Nick's on topic, so I appreciate it, but it is a. appreciate it, but it is, was quite a disaster from their end. And is there any art center, art center funding updates? Some residents have reached out stating there were announcements made somewhere that the art center is not going to be taking money from DDA anymore, and they're going to be doing a true parking study. If that's true, that's really good news. But numerous people have reached out, so I'm wondering if you have anything official to share?
Yeah, so a couple things. Correct me with some of the questions as I go along, but that is true. The SCOP Center, after discussions with them and their development team, you know, I strongly urge that they consider a parking study, especially with the concerns around the residential areas, and they have agreed to do so. And they are actually working with MKSK right now on an official parking study just for the SCOP Center. So that is confirmed and true. Also in discussions with the SCOP Center team, you know, there was a discussion amongst the DDA years ago for a $75,000 commitment to provide those services. And at further discussions with them, they have decided that they will not be needing that $75,000. So I'm happy to say that for the DDA. So they'll have more money within their budget. And then what was the next thing?
Those two things for the arts. So that's really good news for our residents. So thanks for answering that. And then one more, the last thing I have is a lot of residents have been asking about theaters. And we know it's, you know, we keep telling staffing it's a huge obstacle currently due to unemployment wages and our minimum wage, really. Last month, you mentioned that our minimum wage is less than $10. So we had a little discussion. I shared my concerns of being so low, and I appreciate the discussion we did have last week where you shared some great feedback. I think it's a good opportunity for you to share those highlights. Maybe we can get support from council to have a discussion about raising our minimum wage across the board. As many of us know, one reason that our city is so wonderful is the staff. Many of us interact with them every day, whether at the parks or around town. So they're an important part of our community. And I know you and I both agree that we hate to lose them somewhere for somewhere paying just a few more dollars more. So I'll hand that off to you if you want to add any of the highlights of our talk. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, no problem. And thank you, Councilmember Rayland. So right now, the minimum wage is $9.65 for a starting part-time employee over at the Parks and Recreation Department. And as of right now, you know, we have had some challenges, as most businesses are, with attracting people to those jobs. I know Ace Hardware, Building Cleaners, and others have certainly had to increase their wages due to, you know, the, you know, just getting talent, you know, to be able to do these jobs. And so one of the areas that we have a challenge with is our wages. As you look at within the last fiscal year budget, you know, we certainly actually went over on those and with that $800,000 shortfall, it was quite a, you know, it's quite a tough pill to swallow. But at the same time, we also need to bring people in in order to operate our parks. And so that's something that Mr. Craig and I, working with Finance Director Blayhut, are coming up with ideas, whether that's, you know, reducing, you know, some temporary staff in order to pay for those wages, how we go about attracting those people. Certainly in regards to movie theater, you're absolutely right, because come July 1, you know, if we can get a good movie in because we're required to have it for two weeks, we obviously need to be able to have people to run the movies, you know, and serve the popcorn and everything else. So, you know, just the cost of, you know, business in this post, getting to post-COVID world, I believe we'll probably end up having to increase some possible fees at the parks in regards to movie theater or classes. And we're reviewing every crumb that we can, whether we have to reduce, you know, maybe certain ones that are not attended as well, or, you know, how can we look to pay, you know, those wages that'll be able to bring those employees in. So it's certainly, it's something that we're looking into right now. It's quite a challenge, but I think my team and I are certainly up for it. So I thank you for your support. And obviously, if you know of any people that are looking for jobs, please give them a holler. We're looking.
I appreciate your efforts, Nick. Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? For Councilmember Fluid again?
Well, I just wanted to follow up on something Councilmember Robson said, which was that the city manager has a weekly meeting with DTE. And obviously, not all of council is going to be able to attend that. But is there a possibility of council members attending any of those weekly meetings, in particular, you know, those of us who are on the Public Service Committee?
Yes, so it's an opportunity that we could do. Today is Monday, so if you would like to be in attendance for the Wednesday meeting, we could do so. Just let me know of your availability and we can do that.
Is that...
Nine o'clock.
I think, yeah, I think that perhaps by request, you know, we all have our individual interests and schedules. If you have a request to be part of the Wednesday meeting, get in touch with the city manager.
And it's always nine o'clock on Wednesday?
Nine o'clock on Wednesdays.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else before we move on? Thank you, City Manager Sizemore for that report, and thank you, council, for those questions and discussion. I think that was a very productive session. Now we move on to committee and commission reports. And we have a few of those. Although Planning Commission did not actually meet, something that we haven't touched on yet in this meeting is the master plan. And so I'm going to ask Councilmember Hodges to comment on the master plan open house that was hosted by the Planning Commission and our consultant, MKSK.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. As you said, there was a master plan open house held on May 25. Certainly, it's important for this master plan to be done well because it establishes a clear vision for the city with realistic and strategic recommendations on land use, redevelopment, and capital improvements for the next five to 10 years. The findings of that planning process will also support the zoning ordinance and capital improvement plans, which are the tools that will be utilized to actually implement the master plan. So that open house was important and was an opportunity for the community to come in and discuss its thoughts on bike and pedestrian opportunities, opportunities in the business district, housing, design guidelines, zoning, of course, and senior housing, parks and open spaces, and city services. For anyone that might have missed that opportunity to contribute or found it difficult to do on site, I know I found it a little bit like when you're at that fundraising event and you have to talk to your neighbor as well as bid on the silent auction. You can still do so at GPPmasterplan.com. Again, GPPmasterplan.com if any of our community members and stakeholders have thoughts on those topics. There will be another workshop likely in August, and we're now roughly at the midpoint of the estimated 12-month process with next steps, including a focus on things like future land use, multimodal transportation, implementation strategies, and others. And then just briefly to point out, Chair Malik Goodwin and my fellow planning commissioners have been busy. There's the internal review of the MAC, excuse me, of the Wayburn Multi-Family Development Continues. It was introduced at the April meeting. We appreciate the input of the residents who continue to insert their perspectives on that. All of that has been submitted to the developer who's working on revisions. And then with the city manager's hire of new service providers, and a more thorough review is now underway. So we continue that ongoing evolution toward best practices in the area of our planning department. And traffic circulation issues are being studied as part of that, too. So I would expect a Planning Commission meeting will be scheduled to address that project, if not at the next regularly scheduled meeting of July 21st at 7:00 PM, possibly before then. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Let's move on to beautification. Councilmember Relon, I believe beautification met at least once, perhaps twice since our last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we had a meeting on June 2. We had our, we have a yearly potluck. Last year, we weren't able to do that. So we were able to have that potluck, and it was pretty wonderful in the rain. We were at Linda Lodge. We had the most guests we've ever had, which was really fun to mingle in person for the first time in a long time. The biggest outcome of that meeting was our beautification awards process. We're going to start surveying. We've broken into five groups. We're going to be spreading out around the community, canvassing the entire city, looking for beautiful landscaping, as well as structural improvements. And the only, the big thing is, if you have, if you've won since 2018, you're not eligible to win until next year. We have a four-year rolling platform for that. At this time, our next meeting is September 15. But I will have an update come August with our award winners. And I'd love for you to email me any homes that you feel are shining stars in your area, and we'll send someone out there to take a look. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Move on to Tifa. Tifa met in, early in June, and we'll ask the city manager to report their, in his role as Tifa director.
So thank you, Mayor Donner. The Tax Increment Finance Authority met on June 8. And as part of that process, an informational meeting was held, which is a requirement by Public Act 57 of 2018, reviewing activities and goals and objectives for the following fiscal year for the Tifa. And then afterwards, a call to order of the special meeting of the Tax Increment Finance Authority for the formal adoption of its fiscal year 2021-22 budget. So Ms. Leah Smith and I right now are working on grants right now for residential improvement, business improvement grants. And right now, the subcommittees of the business and residential will be getting together soon to discuss their ideas for the Tifa for the following year.
Okay, thank you. Similarly, the Downtown Development Authority, the DDA, met early in June. And as a member of the DDA, I will, I'll give a brief report. Again, it was an informational meeting followed by a special meeting to adopt the budget. The informational meeting, similar to Tifa, was to cover activities and plans since November 20, the November 24, 2020 informational meeting, which was the last informational meeting. So the highlights included the COVID Grant Program, the adoption of the DDA bylaws, which were accomplished during that period, further beautification of our traffic islands around Jefferson. And also importantly, the commissioning of MKSK for a parking study for the DDA District. So that process will dovetail with what was commented on earlier regarding the SCOP Center parking studies, so that the entire DDA District will be covered by a parking study, some of it funded by the SCOP Center and some of it funded by the DDA. And then going forward, looking at further beautification of the district, coordinating on the master plan, completing the parking study, looking at new grant opportunities, and potential enhancements to traffic safety along Jefferson. So that's, those are the topics covered in the informational meeting. And then the budget that this council approved for the DDA was formally adopted by the DDA in a special meeting following information. That's my report on the DDA. And I would ask, I think that Councilmember Hodges may have a report on her participation with the Eastside Community Network.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. For the benefit of the community, the Eastside Community Network also oversees the Mac Avenue Business Association, which is a collaboration of the City of Detroit, Wayne County, each of the Grist Points touching Mac Avenue, and other partners like DTE. I serve on it, along with our Planning Commission Chair Malik Goodwin. And the group met today, and the following items were discussed. First, a request for a stimulus allocation was jointly submitted to Representative Joe Tate, who also happens to be, and this is something we shouldn't forget, the ranking member of the House Appropriations Committee for a corridor-wide planning effort. The city manager and I also briefly discussed how we might be able to enhance that even further for the benefit of Grist Point Park. The second item that was discussed was the City of Grist Point did approve its zoning changes, which is leading to new interest by the business community, including the new Burger Point and Wings. Third, the Farms is considering how to make Mac more walkable and pedestrian-friendly, and is seeing good occupancy along the corridor, even despite the pandemic. There's also an effort underway to create a summer marketing campaign to increase traffic on Mac Avenue, along with a potential for a fall festival similar to what is done on Charlevoix and Kirchvall. ECN is also holding a Juneteenth event this Saturday at its Connor Campus from 1:00 to 4:00. I did mention to them also the potential for a collaborative effort to get the K-line trolley operating again, that there might be reason for all of those parties that are at the table, because we all have a stake and an opportunity to benefit from it, to working together to get that online again. Also, Mr. Goodwin and I updated the, our partners on other things going on in Grist Point Park, including our master planning process, so they're aware of that, the status of the new DPW building. We invited them and encouraged them to be part of the WeGP Pride March on June 26. We shared with them that if they missed the boogie, they had our condolences this past Saturday, but said that they will have another opportunity to come hang with the cool Grist Point Parkers at the after-six events that are coming up. So if the community would like some homework, it's always good to have action items. I'd recommend that we all work to attend that Juneteenth programming on Saturday. And also, if you have suggestions for performance artists and that, many of our African-American teammates are booked this time of year. So it would be great to see some additional representation there. So any suggestions anybody might have, they share them with me, and I will advance them to the ECN team. And then I'd also encourage you, although I think most of you have probably already done this, visit the new Aldi, and as well as the Burger Point, and go check out Alma Kitchen's new mural, so that we're all working to make sure Mac remains strong. The next meeting is on July 14, and I'll be sure to update you thereafter. And would welcome any thoughts or ideas anybody might have that you would like me to advance to that table. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had in the way of committees and commissions. Did I miss anything? It looks like I got them all this month. Oh, Councilmember Fluid?
I just had a question. If we're done with the committee reports, I think this would fall under committee reports. So I have heard a couple of people in the community had been maybe approached about being on, I don't even know what the name of it is going to be, but the DPS Director had mentioned setting up a Citizens Advisory Committee. So I wanted to see if we were at a place yet where we were going to start soliciting applications from residents, or talking about how that committee is going to be formed, or are we there yet?
I'll ask the manager to comment if he has one.
Yeah, so Chief Gerald can correct me if any of this I'm wrong. But right now, he's working with me to establish, you know, what would be a makeup of that group. So we're, you know, we're looking at right now, you know, different representation that should be involved in that. It's something that, you know, personally, I'd like, you know, I'm going to keep myself away from it and let him run with it. It's something that he's very interested in. He's been wanting to meet with other groups, including the NWCP, the schools, and others, you know, for representation and consideration moving forward. Otherwise, Chief, if you're on the line, feel free to correct me on any of that.
Thank you. No, I'm not going to correct. I can't get my video working. It says the host has turned it off, so I don't, I don't have video. But yeah, we're currently, it's in the very early infant stages, if you will. And so, here we go. So yeah, we are looking at different representation throughout the community as far as the makeup of this group would go. And we're just tossing it around right now. I'm probably going to send out what I have as far as a list to the council. And if you have any other suggestions that you think might, somebody who might need to be on the committee who's not, or somebody who's on there that you don't think is a good representative, you know, I'll take all that input and go from there.
So is there, and it sounds like, you know, you're still working through this, but is there going to be an opportunity for just interested residents in the community to apply? Or are you talking about more council members putting names forward?
No, we'll probably advertise on our new Facebook page, which the Police Department or the Public Safety Department now has through the Grist Point News and other media outlets. And we're going to advertise, and then we will accept applications. We will screen those. My staff and I will screen those. And certainly probably get input from others to screen those and get the best people on board. The whole committee idea is nothing more than an opportunity to push information into the community or answer questions and get people, just another way of communicating.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, terrific. Thanks. Is this, Councilmember McCall, does this still fall under committee and commission?
It does, so I apologize. But I just want to get clarity from Councilmember Hodges because the website for the master plan said that comments could be made through May 31. So can you just clarify, can people still, they said the mapping would be up through May 31, and then after that, that would close out. So can you just clarify?
Yeah, that was my understanding. In the documentation that I reviewed, I will check back with Ann Marie Kirby with MKSK, however, and see if we can get some additional clarity on that.
Thanks.
Okay. I think that closes committee and commission reports. Now we move on to unfinished business, and we have one item under unfinished business for us, and that's the four-way traffic stop discussion, which perhaps will result in a resolution tonight. I'll ask the administration to introduce that topic. I'll ask the administration to introduce that topic.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. And so before you tonight, there's a discussion topic. Yeah, this has been discussed before, you know, regarding some traffic safety areas and including safe routes to schools. So I'm not going to steal his thunder, but I'm, I'm going to let Chief Gerald discuss, you know, the summary within the line item here and his findings with Lieutenant Bostock. Chief, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So the item before you is four-way stop signs at Westchester and Avondale and Westchester and Fairfax. Putting four-way stops at those locations would complete the Safe Routes to School Plan on that side of Jefferson. There's two options available to the council tonight. You can either direct administration to turn this over to traffic engineering study, or you as a council can forward the motion and designate the above intersections as four-way stops. After speaking, Lieutenant Bostock, soon-to-be Deputy Director Bostock, and myself have spent a great deal of time, we've, we've driven these areas, and it is our recommendation that the council move forward and make that recommendation to put four-way stops at those two intersections. With that, I don't think any questions.
Yeah, I, I'll make a, a comment first, and then we'll open it up for any other questions and comments from council as we move forward. Based on my review of the information, I am in favor of council taking action on those intersections for a four-way stop. Preliminary review would say that a traffic engineer's study, which looks at statistics as much as anything else, may not tell us that we need to put them there. However, we believe that, I believe, I think public safety believes, and many of us believe that, to enhance the safe routes route, and also to cut down the speeding on Avondale, that was mentioned in the earlier session, that earlier public comment, that, that this would be a wise thing for us to do, and it's within the power of council to put together, to put forward a, a motion to direct the administration to do so. So I just wanted to let you know where I was, where I stood on that. Others, Councilmember Reed.
I agree with you, Mayor Denner, and I think we know as a council, based on recent events in our community, that the foot traffic has increased at those intersections, and it's their youngest and most vulnerable residence. So I, I also support the recommendation of public safety to move forward with installing the four-way stops at those intersections.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Hodges?
I'd like to move approval of the four, of the four-way traffic stops at the, at the intersections noted, Westchester and Avondale, as well as Westchester and Fairfax.
Is there a support, is there support for that motion? Councilmember Rowland? Any further discussion? This may turn out to be easy. Mayor Protem Robson.
Well, while we were on the subject, and I spoke with the Director this morning, these two four-ways need to be implemented, and I think they will be tonight, but there has been citizens' concerns, requests for other four-ways. One near to Avondale and Barrington, and much concern I've received about the possibility of placing a four-way at Lake Point and St. Paul. You gave me your thoughts this morning, Chief, but I thought you might want to share that with the rest of us. What direction in those other two locations?
Certainly. So again, soon-to-be Director, Deputy Director Bostock and I, we, we've driven all of these locations, we've driven them at different times of the day. We are firmly in support of completing the Safe Routes to School Plan route along Westchester. But the other locations, in, in my professional opinion, I, I just, I don't see the need right now. So in this case, I would ask, if, if the council wants us to move forward, I'd ask that they direct administration to get with Traffic Improvement Association. We have them, we pay a fee to them manually for their services, so it wouldn't really cost us anything more, and have a traffic study done at, at those locations. And then based on that data, we can then, or you as a council, can then make an educated decision on what you want to do with those locations. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I think that, let's, let's, let's take that up as a follow-on to the motion that's on the floor, and then we can, we can proceed from there. Is, is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor? With that, Clerk Playhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. The administration has been directed to put four-ways in at those two intersections. I think that that will enhance safety in those neighborhoods and for this, for the Safe Routes to School route. So I'm, I'm really pleased with that. I'd like to hear, get sense of council on directing our traffic engineer to look at the other two locations that have been identified, Barrington, Avondale, and Lake Point, St., St. Paul. I don't have a strong view on it, so I'd be interested in council's comments. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I, I am not so certain about the Barrington and Avondale, but Lake Point and St. Paul, and just St. Paul in general, there is no stop from Webern to Cadu. And it's come, it's a busy throughway in the mornings for people commuting to downtown, while kids are also walking to school. So I don't know if Lake Point is the best spot. I have also heard the same comments that Councilmember Robson has heard, but I think it warrants exploring a stop sign somewhere in that general vicinity. So those are my comments.
There, there is, by the way, I believe, a traffic signal at Audubon, which was put, is, is there during school hours to support, I think, St. Clair. I think that's what the original implementation was for. But there are no stop signs. You are correct.
None on St. Paul.
That's on Charlevoix.
Yeah, that's Charlevoix.
Oh, that's Charlevoix. I'm sorry. I stand corrected. Thank you. Should have driven that area. Okay, Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think we only have five days of school left, but Lake Point, or I'm sorry, St. Paul and Somerset would be a great spot to get a three-way stop. I think that would improve the safety around that area. And I know we did talk about having a traffic, a school traffic coalition through the summer with some teachers, I'm sorry, principals and parents that are concerned, because we've been getting so many emails about that. I'll email Nick and talk about that for our next meeting, possibly to get support on. I'm, I've always been concerned about Essex and Pemberton, just at the corner of my street. It's an S curve, which is blinded, blind, a blind curve. So if someone starts to walk and a car's coming in that intersection, they have to jump back to the sidewalk. So I, I'd appreciate if Chief Gerald could take a look at that and Lieutenant Bostock as well, or approve for the safety, the traffic safety committee to take a look at that intersection. We approached it a couple of years ago, and it didn't pass the, the past chief's eyes. But I'd like a new set of eyes to be put on that, because that's been a concern for all of us that live around here. With Trambly being closed, it's a little different, but it is still a concern through the summer, is a lot of kids use Pemberton to get to park.
Okay, what I, what I'm hearing is a strong, a strong support for engineering study for St. Paul in the vicinity of the, of the backup years.
Yep, yep.
And I would, and I'm happy to direct administration pursue that, as, and they have, they have the authority to, to do so, so that there's further information for, for them, for the administration to consider, and us if necessary. The others are a little bit less clear. I think the Barrington, Avondale, because we just approved a Westchester, Avondale stop, whether or not, how that one might come out, but we could include that if council felt it was appropriate. And then, and then you mentioned the one near, near your neighborhood.
Essex and Pemberton.
Councilmember Rowland, I, I think that's been studied once before.
It was studied, but we weren't given any data.
Okay, so the chief might be able to find that in the, in the records and get back with Councilmember Rowland to.
I'd love to have his eyes on it as well, just to have his, have, have someone try to walk across that street and then have someone drive down, or I can take a video and show you.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Anybody else? Mayor Protem Robson?
I'll pass over to Councilmember McConnell. She had her hand up first, so.
Crossbar, I missed that.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Councilmember Robson, and Mayor Denner. I actually have sort of a sidebar issue to this, and, and maybe the chief or lieutenant can, and help me clarify. I know that we had, in addition to the staff crossing guards, there were some young people who were crossing guards prior to the pandemic, and I was just curious on the status of that, if we are, because there's some streets that I, as I understand, are no longer being assisted. So I was just wondering about the status of that, if there are any plans to bring back additional crossing guards.
I'll let Lieutenant Bostock answer that one.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McConnell, are you referring to the student population crossing guards?
Correct.
Okay. I'm not aware of any plans for the remainder of this year. I'm certain that, you know, with the beginning of the school year next year, that they will get on it. I, I fully believe that it was simply because of COVID that the kids weren't doing the crossings.
I guess that the follow-up is just that we have some interim solution if, if that doesn't happen. I guess that's what I was trying to get at.
Well, we have six crossing guards currently, full-time, two times a day. My, my thoughts is I will contact or have my school safety officer contact the schools and make sure that we have, have those posted.
As Lieutenant pointed out, we, we're essentially at the end of the school year now, so this will be something we've got the summer to take a look at.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, the.
Here.
Sure. Mayor Protem Robson, I'm sorry, I came back to you. I had you once and then.
Thank you. Just following up on the four-ways. Chief, in regards to the four-way Barrington and Avondale, previous discussions suggest that perhaps that location or one block over at Lake Point might be better, so I would leave that to the study as well.
Okay. I would agree that, that should go to TIA, the Traffic Improvement Association. Let's, let's find out what the traffic count is, let's find out what the average speeds are, and then the council can make an educated decision about what they want to do at that location.
Okay, sounds good. This is, the, the discussion we just had was effectively council comment on unfinished business, but we'll come back and see if there's other council comment on unfinished business.
Sorry, sorry. This is for city manager, Mr. Seiz. I'm wondering, we, we had a discussion previously about finding an assistant city manager to, to give you some relief, as well as a DDA and Tifa director. I don't know if you have any updates on that?
So something that I've been looking into in my capacity, obviously, I wear, we'll, we'll call it three hats for this discussion, but, you know, Tifa, DDA, and city manager. And so one of those areas that I've looked at for consideration, and we do have, have it budgeted for, is a director. And so that is something, you know, I, I do have been working on a job description right now for a potential advertisement that'll come out for somebody to fill in on a part-time basis, working as the Tifa and DDA director. Otherwise, for assistant city manager, I think that's something that, you know, we would probably have to look at and wait for another fiscal year to look, because right now, our, our city budget's pretty tight right now. But in the absolute of this upcoming fiscal year, we have the money available for that Tifa and DDA. So as much as I enjoy Tifa and DDA, you know, they're great people, great volunteers in there, you know, it's something as well that I would like, obviously, for them to have further involvement with somebody that's dedicated directly to Tifa and DDA. And so obviously, as much as I'd like to help and do what I can, wearing three hats at times can be quite a challenge, but, you know, working on it, and so it's kind of where we're at right now.
Do you have an estimated deadline? Sorry. Gotcha.
Sorry, I was drinking water. Probably within the next, you know, after doing some research, I've been looking on the MML as well, getting some guidance there, Michigan Municipal League, for some good advertisements, you know, that I could use. Because right now, it's very rare to find a Tifa slash DDA director, so it's obviously putting in the Tifa components, putting the DDA components. There's a couple of good examples out there that I'm reviewing right now and trying to find what would be a good bar to be able to attract a, an employee, you know, whether that's a retired consultant or somebody that has a planning background, it's something that we're certainly looking at. And then it'll be up to those boards as well. And then I think on one of them, actually, council has to confirm the appointment when that does happen, you know, that'll be done. So if I had to say a timeline, I'll do my best, but I don't want to under, you know, chief or over. You know, I'd probably say within, you know, the next month or two, so.
Perfect.
I hope that helps, but.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I think that closes council comment on unfinished business, and we can move on to new business. First item on new business is, is our Pride Month proclamation. We spent a good deal of time last year on council deciding how to, how to recognize Pride Month, and we came up with this, with a resolution that, and this is essentially the same resolution that was adopted by council last year. I think it's something that we've, we found appropriate as a council to do on an annual basis in coordination with other entities that recognize June as Pride Month. So you have before you the proclamation designated June as LGBTQ Pride Month, and I can read the proclamation if you wish, but I will also be happy to entertain a, a motion to approve it. Councilmember Reed?
I'll move, I move that we adopt the City of Growth Point Park proclamation designated June as LGBTQ Pride Month.
Is there support from Councilmember McConnell? Would you like me to read it? It has been, it is in all the meeting materials, and it's on the, on the website, but I will if you wish.
Yes, please.
Okay, I will read it. "Whereas the City of Growth Point Park supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas all people, regardless of age, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas in support of the city's commitment, a non-discrimination ordinance was adopted by the city council on June eighth, two thousand and twenty, making these rights the law of the city. And whereas the City of Growth Point Park accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the City of Growth Point Park. And whereas U.S. presidents from both major parties, the federal government, the state of Michigan, and multiple municipalities, over the last twenty years regularly recognized June as LGBTQ Pride Month. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Denner, and members of the Growth Point Park City Council hereby proclaim June two thousand and twenty-one as LGBTQ Pride Month in Growth Point Park, Michigan, and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ community face, and celebrate the contributions that, that enhance our city." That is the motion on the floor to adopt that resolution. Any further discussion before we call the roll? Councilmember Fluid?
I just want to thank the city attorney. I think this is a lovely resolution.
Thank you. He's smiling. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. And just to point out how ever more important this is, given some of the vandalism, one of our much-loved community members and families experienced over the last week, and it's just, I'm really honored to be part of a solution towards just really embracing them and saying that that's, that's not welcome here. So I hope they see this as an expression of support from their elected officials and that that will continue. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add, if, if we can add this to city manager's notes, to put this in the May council meeting for next year, so we can adopt it in time for June. It's, it's beautiful, by the way, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, are we ready to call the roll? Clerk Playhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. The proclamation designated June as LGBTQ Pride Month has been adopted. Let's move on to the next item, which is the finance report, which in many months is included in our consent agenda. Councilmember Fluid asked that it be pulled from the. Let's move on to the next item, which is the finance report, which um in many months is included in our consent agenda. Uh Councilmember Fluid asked that it be pulled from the uh consent agenda so that it could be discussed. Um I guess I will ask Councilmember Fluid to uh identify uh the discussion point and then we can move on to approval of the uh finance report.
Thank you. Um so if you're looking at um the line items for the finance report, which is for us is the cover sheet. I don't believe uh residents receive the invoices, obviously, that we have uh in our packet. So um that those line items at the very bottom for OHM advisors, we have a line item for Mac Avenue Water Main slash DWSRF project plan for a little over six thousand dollars. Um can I clarify what DWSRF stands for?
Uh that would be Drinking Water Sewer Revolving Fund um loan. That is uh one of the items we'll be discussing heavily uh tomorrow at the uh public service uh meeting as kind of a preliminary. And then further at the June twenty-eighth uh special city council meeting for a public hearing.
Okay.
And and the Mac Avenue Water Main, oh, sorry, just one last point on that. Um Mac Avenue Water Main as well, this is something that uh the city had looked at before. Um as a project, we have many main breaks, especially over in the area of uh the Mac Cadu. Um before the street was uh paved, you actually um, you know, if you had your right uh front or back tire, you better get it aligned because uh uh you know, there's quite a bunch of dips in the roads from having to fix those main brakes. And so this was another project that um, you know, we have right now and the permits are shovel-ready if need be. You know, whether we want to consider that as part of the DWSRF project, we want to use this potentially with American Rescue Plan funding or something that we have in our hopper. Um you know, down the road that we could work on. Um that that's what the Mac Avenue Water Main is.
Okay, um thank you. So as I said, I think we should, we each have four pages worth of invoices um connected with that line item and that's what I had questions about. And hopefully um yours are in the same order that mine are. So if we go to, what I have is page three, which is a five hundred dollar invoice um for site plan review. And it says it's um the um the short version is site plan review on the DPW facility. It's a five hundred dollar bill um to Tifa. So on this one, I was just curious why this was coming to the city and not to Tifa.
Okay, you said for a five hundred dollar charge?
Yeah, I think I think it's more of a process question than anything else because the uh uh the finance report will um Tifa and DDA uh funds are managed through the city. Uh they they have a budget, they manage their their own funds in the sense of uh approvals. Uh but the actual administration of the dollars is done through the uh through the city and our finance department. And so because they are part of our city's budget that we approve, um funds that are uh spent by Tifa will often be, you know, if it's in the and related to general city business particularly, will often show up on our uh finance report. Now, the administration can clarify that to see if I might be mistaken, but uh and I could.
Yeah, so so for the site plan review and I'll clerk Blighut confirm with me as well, but uh the five hundred dollar site plan review was charged to Tifa. Is that correct, Kirk Blighut?
Yes, that's correct. And the reason that total bill is on there is because we include the total amount that is paid to a vendor and that total purchase order was for six thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Some of it was for Tifa, so that's why the total amount is included in that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then we also have um again, hopefully everybody's pages are in the same order. The first page is uh project management, project plan, again for the DWSRF project plan for um just over three thousand dollars. And so just confirming, this is what we're talking about with the drink uh the drinking water revolving fund that we're going to be discussing further tomorrow night, correct? Because.
That's correct, yes.
Oh OHM advisors does a lot of our engineering, they do a lot of those city services. So we're on the same page there, right?
Yep, you got it.
Okay. And then the other two invoices uh I'm asking about because they both have Art Center written at the top. So these indicate um Mac Avenue Water Main Project and Maryland Street Parking Lot. Um that's the very last page in my packet. Uh just a general services. So you've already discussed what the Mac Avenue Water Main Project is. What about the Maryland Street Parking Lot?
Uh so what we're doing is part of the um uh SCOP Center project is, you know, we have to bring in OHM advisors as well for reviewing any um utilities and their engineering as work as well from the city's standpoint. Uh any work that we're doing, especially in regards to the um uh Maryland Street Parking Lot, working with the SCOP Center team and as well as uh others that is in the, let me go back to it. Uh the site plan review is being charged back to the SCOP Center as part of their uh bill, their building permit fees.
Okay, so are you addressing both of those invoices that indicate Art Center on them? Because the other one says.
Yeah, sorry if I jumped you.
Yeah, no, so there is, yeah, the other one indicates site plan review. It says there was a meeting in the city offices with the development team. And you're telling me that the city got an invoice for this, but we're not actually paying for it?
We paid for it right now, but then it's going to be charged back in their building permit fees. So when when they, when the SCOP Center, which actually just dropped off um their building plans today and as our building official goes through and he calculates all this building permit fees, which um is going to come up in a further discussion as part of the fee schedule. He's going to add on as well um these other charges that were uh done through OHM.
Okay, I think I think that's all I have.
Councilmember Reed.
Just to comment on that, um I think something that would be helpful in that case um for the city manager um a notation on invoices that are being paid by another entity, probably would save that um conversation. And just sort of my comment, because I've been, I've requested since I've been on council to review the invoices that go with the um the finance report and I've never seen invoices for Tifa and DDA. So just a brief explanation along the lines of the memo that you give to us for a lot of the other agenda items would, I think, help clarify that and probably save a a longer discussion like we're having now.
Sounds like it makes sense. I think clerk uh Finance Director Blighut with that hat on uh noted that it was a single in invoice from OHM. So that's why it it rose to the to the finance report, but it had a number of components, some of which are paid by other entities. Okay, any uh with that, I entertain a motion to approve the finance report.
So moved.
Support, Councilmember Rowland. Uh any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. Finance report is is approved. The next item of business is uh the adoption of ordinance number two-two-four. And there's also a separate item that will uh take up the adoption of ordinance number two-two-five. So I will uh turn that over to administration to introduce the first one, adoption of ordinance number two-two-four.
Uh thank you, Mayor Denner. Um and also this, I'll I'll bringing Councilmember Reed as well, since she is the chair of the Ordinance Review Committee. And so um proposed ordinances, um I'll I'll jump ahead with both, but two-two-four and two-two-five. Um I did talk with uh Councilmember Reed uh beforehand, um you know, requesting that uh both of these items I felt were uh simple uh clerical and or updates that we needed to make and that I um I thought that we could move forward to council instead of ordinance review is where we have further uh good discussions in regards to how we're going to form an ordinance. And so with that said, um just for a a summary on two-two-four, one of those is to reflect to the the current status of residents with the dog walking passes at Patterson Windmill Point Park. Uh these ordinance, this ordinance will allow those to continue walking. Those are both parks daily upon the dates and times reflected. As were before, the old ordinance only had the weekends. This clarifies that it allows for weekdays as well. And that once the Patterson Park Dog Park opens, walking passes won't be permitted at Windmill Point Park. Um I'll ask uh Chair Reed if she had any other comment regarding that uh ordinance.
Yeah, I just, what what I will add is um in one one brief um recommendation. There was uh between the Parks and Recs Director and um how the ordinance was originally adopted, there was miscommunication. Um and our ordinance that was adopted did include a weekends only. Um so this, so they were operating under what they had requested, but which was not approved. So this corrects that so that how we're operating is in alignment with what our ordinance actually says. But only one um change I would suggest, and this came up in our discussions before, and that would be paragraph four a B four-three, if we eliminate that word weekend, because that added to some confusion just after Labor Day. Um because that's a Monday, if we take that out and we're just, Labor Day is a Monday and that changes, that's the day after it changes the protocol. Um but otherwise, this is um consistent with what administration has requested and with how the administration operated with the dog walking passes prior to going back a couple of years prior to the enactment of any ordinance addressing it.
Okay, do uh do I have a motion uh to approve the uh ordinance two-two-four? And I thi- I will accept the uh the motion including the uh amendment that was suggested by uh Councilmember Reed.
So moved.
Moved.
Did did we get that? There are a bunch of hands up and so moves. Uh one of you could be set the second, if you would like to volunteer to be the supporter.
Or.
Okay, Councilmember McConnell will be support. Um any further discussion on uh Councilmember two-two or or I'm sorry, on ordinance two-two-four before we uh call the roll for adoption? Clerk Playhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Uh yes, uh motion passes ordinance two-two-four uh as amended is uh has been adopted. Uh thank you on that one. Let's move on to uh ordinance number two-two-five.
Okay, uh thank you, Mayor. Uh thank you, Mayor Denner. Um so as well, um this is something that um uh Chief Gerald is uh certainly taking a look at our city ordinances regarding uh public safety. Um you know, getting um his hands dirty of of what we can do to fix. And one of those in review is the um chapter sixteen-two um begging within chapter sixteen of our offenses is unconstitutional according to the US Court of Appeals Sixth Circuit Court. And before you is a replacement ordinance for panhandling uh is attached for your review and consideration. Uh this is something that Chief Gerald and Lieutenant Bostock were reviewing of other uh cities that have similar ordinances uh that would put us in compliance um for uh panhandling. And so this is something as well that I talked with uh uh Chair Reed about, that this is something I felt that we could probably move forward to council, especially considering it was an unconstitutional ordinance. And so um if the chief has any further comment, I'll let him speak. Um otherwise, um if not, then Chair Reed.
Well, Chief. Well, I I think you've covered it very well, Mr. Seisland. Uh it's just, it's unconstitutional what we currently have on the books that was enacted in nineteen fifty-seven. A lot of things, I think, you can agree have changed since then. Uh this is one of them. And it's not just the the Sixth Circuit and the US Court of Appeals, the US Supreme Court and many, many state courts, including uh the state of Michigan, has have all found that uh ordinances that prohibit people who are poor uh from asking for handouts or money or food is unconstitutional.
Okay, good. Uh Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, and I'll just add first, I would also like to thank Chief Gerald for um bringing this to our attention. Um the Sixth Circuit case that um that uh I shared with the committee happens, Michigan's part of the Sixth Circuit and it happened to involve a Michigan case. Um so I think that was part of the the relevance there. But um we did circulate the proposed ordinance change among the ordinance review committee. But because we had this council meeting coming up, because um it was clear the action that we needed to take and and that we had sample uh ordinance language that is in compliance with the US Constitution. Um we agreed to advance it this way and the committee members were all in agreement. So um with that, I will go ahead and move for adoption of ordinance number two-two-five.
Is there support?
Or.
Yeah, support from uh Councilmember Fluid. Uh any further discussion? Uh Councilmember Fluid.
Um I also want to thank Chief Gerald for pointing this out. Um very small thing on the um in the in the second to the last line on the back of the page. Ensure needs to be with an E, not with an I. It's a different, it's a different meaning. I'm a stickler. It's the only thing I wanted to point out.
Thank you. That happens to be one of my pet peeves, too, is the is the issue of ensure and insure.
Yeah.
So it's a, we'll we'll count that as a typo to be corrected by the clerk.
Yeah, that's my only issue.
Okay, um any other uh discussion? Clerk Playhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hodges.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Uh yes, motion passes. Uh ordinance two-two-five has been adopted. Thank you. Moving on to the next item of business, uh it's the fee schedule that uh city manager alluded to earlier in the meeting and is now before you. I'll ask the uh city manager to kind of.
Uh thank you, Mayor Denner and members of council. Um in my in my um summary uh that I provided to you, um working with our new building official Terry Brennan, who also works with the city, cities of Gross Point Farms and Gross Point City. Um you know, we have been reviewing our a fee schedule um, you know, for this, and so I'll I'll read my memo. Uh the city as well as retain McKenna Associates to assist in plumbing and mechanical inspections for Gross Point Park. Currently, the city retains our um electrician, pump station manager for electrical inspections. He's a member of the Department of Public Works. Um and the city has been reviewed the building, public services department to update its processes, including permits and fees that are charged to residents, contractors, and commercial entities. In review among the Gross Point Building Departments, the park had been on the lower end of its fees and regarding building and administration. Um and this update will bring us to a competitive mid-level among the neighboring communities. Certainly, we don't want to be the lowest. We don't want to be the highest. We're not in the field for making money, but we certainly want to cover our costs um that are associated with the building department. And attached free review is a list of fees including building, plan review, plumbing, electrical, rental, and mechanical. Um I believe a fee schedule will assist our building department programming to our building software um system, which we have over at our public services department, allow visitors an expectation of fees and ensure that users are paying unit administration and inspection costs in lieu of um being subsidized, you know, by the residents. Um this is something that upon uh review, looking at our building department, you look at our plumbing, mechanical, um and electrical. Uh within that permit, there was a subset for fees. However, it would be confusing for those that are looking to apply for a a basic building permit. Um you know, or any others of, you know, is there a master list? Uh you know, where I can just kind of look and see where all those fees at. And uh to my surprise, uh Gross Point Park did not have one. And to my recollection, um it's it's something that the council has not adopted before. And so this is just something that um I'm particularly proud of, as well as our building official, that, you know, this is a good practice for uh local government that, you know, simply we're allowing residents and contractors to be able to, you know, just have an ease at being able to know what they're expected to pay. Um you know, what they're prepared for. Um as part of these fees, uh there is a state construction code, the still the Ross at Hale uh construction code that uh Terry Brennan has reviewed with me that um he feels will keep Gross Point Park in a competitive light. And so I'm just going to highlight a couple of areas for your review. Um and I'm just only going to do a couple, because I know there's quite a bit otherwise in that building permit fee. So I would personally like to thank uh Terry Brennan for all of his help and then working with our administrative staff who certainly felt that there were areas within the building department that we could update. And so everybody had a little bit of hand um in this, so I want to thank them for all their hard work, because this was, this was a lot to do. Um and this is. because this was this was a lot to do, and this is something that I hope you will strongly consider tonight. I'm going to start off with the first one. So in the past, any work completed without proper permits and or inspections, you know, typically there would be a small fine, you know, something that could be fifty dollars or so. I felt that was completely unnecessary and that we needed to, you know, remind those that obviously, you know, they have to pull a proper permit for there. And so that's why you'll see any work committed or completed without proper permits or inspections will be assessed double the fee. And that's consistent with Gross Point City and Gross Point Farms and something Gross Point Woods does as well. The biggest one I would like to bring to your attention is the plan review and building permit fee. And so what I'm going to do is discuss the various gross points and how they assess such. So for the estimated construction value, which is the first thousand, and then you add a dollar for each additional one thousand, Gross Point City was at forty five dollars. Gross Point Park is going to be proposed to be fifty dollars. Gross Point Farms is fifty five dollars, and Gross Point Woods is seventy five dollars. In review of the building department, we were in the understanding that it looked to be that before we were about half of what Gross Point City used to be. So this is certainly an area that we will be recouping, you know, revenue that will be able to pay for expenses within the building department. And so obviously, with any project, that's a huge amount that, you know, we're looking to have those fees increased. And this will put us at a competitive edge that, you know, that'll be below Gross Point Farms and the woods, just but a little bit above the city. Our Certificate of Occupancy is another one that's very popular among the gross points. Something right now, Gross Point Park charges a hundred twenty five dollars per that. What I'm proposing before you tonight, simply just because we have not updated this a while and I don't want to provide too much sticker shock to, you know, landlords and homeowners, is I would propose for a single family, we go to a hundred fifty dollars, a two-family, one seventy five, three-family, two hundred, and a four-family, two twenty five. Currently, right now, Gross Point City charges one fifty. Gross Point Farms charges one fifty, and Gross Point Woods charges one fifty. However, in discussions with each of their building officials, they are actually looking to increase that fee a hundred dollars more. So being that, you know, I didn't want to provide, you know, a hundred dollar exact shock right away, I felt that it was confident that we could go ahead and do a small increase in those fees for that. The Zoning Board of Appeals is another big one I'd like to bring to your attention, and this is something that frequently comes before council, as we've had with twelve hundred Devonshire and other projects in the past. Currently, Gross Point Park had charged three hundred dollars for its process, and that was just a flat three hundred dollars. And so, you know, the city obviously has to pay for postage, paperwork, notice and postings out to the, you know, news and other areas. And so what I'm proposing for you tonight will be consistent with some of our other sister communities. Gross Point City, Gross Point Farms, and Gross Point Woods all have five hundred dollars as their flat fee. And as well, the applicant will be covering the plan review fees for that cost. And so that's something that the city, you know, will not have to absorb that. But as well, something that Mr. Brennan and I have discussed is that there could be an opportunity that if an applicant certainly is granted their variance and it is something up to council, maybe we could, you know, allow some of that charge to go, you know, towards their building permit application. And so it's something for you to consider. The base fee for if you're trying to apply for a build or a plumbing, mechanical, and electrical and other permits, right now across the board, it's seventy five dollars for Gross Point City, Park, Farms, and Woods. And so I wanted to be as light as possible on this. I could certainly go through a couple others. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer those for you tonight. But I would strongly encourage as a method of best practice for our Public Services Department, for residents and contractors, that you humbly adopt this fee schedule. And this will be something that we would look to do every year as a city council, look to update that fee schedule. So that's all for me.
Okay, I want to thank the City Manager and his team for all the work to put this together. There's a lot of detail here, and I appreciate the fact that you highlighted some key ones so that we can get a sense of where where the park will be relative to the other communities should we adopt this schedule. I and I do like what you what you've done in terms of organizing it into a a single document. I would be interested, I think, in getting a motion on the floor and then and then discuss any further. So is there a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented?
I'm moved.
Is there support?
Or.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yes, I also would like to thanks to the administration for this. And having a centralized schedule of fees will make everyone happy. Because right now you have to go to each application, see what the fees are for the permits. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate you highlighting what our other Gross Point communities are charging. So we know that, you know, we're in alignment with that. One comment I have is, and it's, well, you you said at the beginning of your presentation, City Manager Seisland, that you don't think council has ever approved the fees. But our ordinance is Section twenty seven one forty eight, does require the council to establish the fees. So if we haven't, we should have. And to that point, the very last, on the very last page of the fees, you have a note that says fees are basically are subject to periodic change, including additions, deletions, and rate changes. I would propose that you add subject to approval by council because, you know, I we're supposed to do that, and I think that's fair to the residents that they know that the fees that they're being charged have been approved by their elected representation. So that's really my only concern with any of this, that that rates aren't going to change without council approving it.
I think that's a fair point. Thank you. And I think that's really just a administrative add to the bottom as opposed doesn't change the fees themselves. So that's, I think that's a good and fair point. Any other kind of customer fluid?
Thanks. Two things. First of all, I would agree. The the five hundred dollar fee for the for something to go before the the Board of Zoning Appeals is not necessarily exorbitant, depending on the variance that's being requested. But I like what the City Manager said about having that then go toward the the permit fee. Because I I think that that could be a pretty steep fee, depending on what you're requesting. The other thing I wanted to ask about is there was a, where did it go? I think two hundred and yeah, two hundred fifty dollar fee for vacant property registration. What we have right now in our city code is that vacant property is not just a one-time fee. There are, I believe, monthly fees as long as that property remains vacant. So for vacant property, would this be changing what we have right now in terms of not just the one time? Would it just be a one-time registration or would there be ongoing fees?
So I would have to take a look back into that specific area. I don't have all the information in front of me, and I apologize for that Councilmember Fluid. But one of the things that I was looking at is across the board of what the other gross points were doing. Everyone went from about a hundred fifty, two hundred to three hundred dollars. I felt that it was something as a registration we could do for two hundred fifty. But otherwise, as a monthly, I do not recall, and that'd be something I'd have to take a look at. And if you wouldn't mind providing me that reference, or I can try and look tomorrow morning as well, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay, yeah, I will. I will see if I can find that again. I know it is vacant property registration is something that you and I have talked about in the past and making sure that that is done across the board. And I I think, you know, there was a monthly, I'm fairly certain it was a monthly fee. And obviously, that was supposed to be sort of to stimulate the owners of the vacant property to make sure it didn't remain vacant for too long. So I will see what I can find and forward that to you.
Okay, Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mayor. In my attempt to always protect the residents' interest first and then certainly want to make sure we're being business friendly as well and not creating an undue burden, I did check with some of our stakeholders, and they really felt that this did bring us in line with the market and would support it. Then one request they did have is that it be adequately published and communicated out to the businesses and residents so they understand what is expected of them. So this is really another important step toward continuous professionalization. So hats off to the administration. And then as Councilmember for Finance, I would just point out that this will have a favorable impact on revenue expectations, which is something to be celebrated as well, because that impact could be considerable in a partial, even in a partial fiscal year when these are implemented. So great job, administration.
Okay. Thank you. Anything, Councilmember McConnell?
Oh, I also want to commend the administration for this. I just wanted to and to follow up on what Councilmember Hodges said. Do we have a sense of how much revenue potentially could be generated by this? I think you alluded to some self-sustaining potential by by making these changes.
I can say confidently within the building permit fees only that probably another fifty, seventy five, or potentially a hundred thousand dollars.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we call the question? Okay, let's let's call the question. Clerk Playhead, please call a roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hedges.
Yes.
Bradston.
Yes.
Fluid.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes, motion passes. The fee schedule has been adopted. Thank you, council. And as Councilmember Reed pointed out, this does clearly put us in compliance with an ordinance that we already had that said that we needed to do this. So this is, it's good that we've that we're continuing to, you know, clean up our our practices to be best practices in Gross Point Park. With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is our house demolition discussion. This was requested by Councilmember Rowland, so I will ask him to introduce the topic.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. From my discussions with our city manager, GPP doesn't have anything included in our ordinances on the proper process for house or commercial building demolition. And that's really scary is it leaves our residents open to a lot of safety concerns, for one thing. And I believe he agrees. We saw a lack of safety fencing and some proper abatement processes a few times over the last eighteen months. Our city, I feel, needs to be on top of this scenario to better serve our residents and ensure safe practices. Nick and I agree that this is a great opportunity for the city to update another important process and ordinance, adding needed safety and building code checklists that seem to have been outdated for far too long. For the city to be able to enforce requirements around demolition, it requires that it be part of the ordinances. So ultimately, these checklists that get derived should be backed by an approved ordinance. And I'm not an expert. I did. I did a little bit of research, and I'll just share some of it. I'm not going to share all of it, but once that committee or the ordinance review gets approved, I'll share that with them. So just a few are some some of the things that Mr. Vosper brought up are I'm going to reinforce as well. Safety fence standards, due to how dense our neighborhood is and how walkable and bikeable our community is, as well as the number of children and adults who are walking everywhere, I think safety fence standards need to be addressed. Notification to nearby residents. I have a friend that lives on Yorkshire. There was a house that burned down there, and the house that they rebuilt was never fenced or anything. It was just left open for a month or so as it was being abated and things like that. So that's that's a little scary. So notification to nearby residents as well about what's going to be happening, maybe a start date and end date, a person to contact with any questions. Hazardous material survey and removal certificates. I know a lot of other cities do that. And basically, a strict checklist for safety and enforced building ordinances and processes. Like I said, I don't need to go into my my research detailed, but I gladly share with our city manager and those ultimately involved. Tonight, I just look forward to council having a short discussion along with the city manager and then ultimately approving the ordinance review board to work with Nick to update this together and definitely including the building department before approval. I think it's quite important. And I'll I'll hand off to Nick to add anything he has there.
Yeah, I was going to say before we ask City Manager, right? I generally agree with the with the point that this is an area that we should document so that there's clarity. There are elements of what has to be done in any house demo that that are memorialized in in our in our code. But but I can see that this is an area that we could do a better job on. So with that, I'll ask the City Manager to comment.
Thank you, Mayor Denner and Councilmember Rayland. One thing I'm going to correct myself right away from what I had told you. But it is something that we will need to update, and I've seen further issues besides house demolitions is that we do have an ordinance on the books in regards to construction fencing in some of those areas. And there is language about demo. It is something that I do agree we need, you know, we can certainly update a couple areas. Having a professional like Terry Brennan involved has been a pleasure being able to pick his brain and ideas of what we could do for consideration. Just as an example, so everybody here knows Gross Point Farms has an ordinance. They go through the building permit. Gross Point City does not have an ordinance, and they still go through the building permit. A couple of those areas that he and I have discussed, you know, for, you know, demolitions and other construction moving forward is that this is something, you know, you know, verifying the disconnections that have been done on utilities such as gas and electric, water and sewer is something that, you know, our new building official will be looking for when this goes across his desk. Providing education materials for those contractors as well, because there is some requirements that you do have to do lead and asbestos for anything more than a four unit. Anything less than a four unit is not required. However, it is, it would be good just to be able to have just some education materials to say, hey, you know, for, you know, this is what you need to do and please consider, especially in the watering and such, which was done recently on some properties. As well, something that we can do is looking for, excuse me, notification with on, you know, city boards. So that could be here at City Hall, that could be, you know, at the parks, just notifying that there is a, you know, scheduled demolition within such area, you know, and if there's any, you know, concerns, you know, to please go ahead and, you know, contact the said construction. Obviously, a six-foot fence is something that is very important, and that's that was that's been done as well. And lead and asbestos has been is required for commercial buildings, and this is something that our building, our new building officials looking at. So, you know, we're in our when our infancy right now, we did just update the fee schedule. That was a hard work on that. And so working with Mr. Brennan moving forward, this is something that we're going to look to update our process regarding that. And and I I agree with Councilmember Rayland. If we can just take a look back at that ordinance that does cite some of those, maybe we can tweak a couple of things here and there. I think that'd be helpful, and certainly having Mr. Brennan available for his expertise. You know, what's fair to residential, commercial, and provides everybody, you know, just a good, easy process for what I need to do. I'd be in favor of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds like the administration is volunteering to put something together here and then as necessary, work with ordinance review. So that's so I I'm getting that sense already. Mayor Proktema Robson.
Yeah, just a quick question for the administration. Do we currently have a demolition ordinance? You mentioned.
There's language right now in the construction fence site ordinance. I can't remember the number, but it was passed maybe about two years ago. We do need to provide some updates to it because as as I've seen in the past, there has been some confusion, you know, with the previous building official and code enforcement in enforcing that ordinance. And I think if we just clean up the language a little more and maybe provide some updates, that would be helpful for those residential and commercial entities.
I guess one last thing, Councilman Rowland mentioned this, the notification process. I don't know if that's in the current ordinance, but I think what he was referring to in others is that also the immediate neighbors are notified of the demolition prior to the demolition. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Reed.
I agree with everything that City Manager has said and both Councilmember Rowland and Robson. And and the City Manager and I have been talking as well about we have in our committee, our ordinance review committee. We have a lot of work to do. I agree with everything that city manager has said and both Councilmember Rowland and Robson. And, and the city manager and I have been talking as well about, we have, and our committee, our ordinance review committee, we have a lot of work to do. So I'm happy to, to take, to add this to our, our, our growing list of, of ordinances we need to clean up and add to.
Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, I second what Mr. Robson said. It is a notification of within, you know, you guys will decide what's, is it in with one hundred feet or two hundred feet should be a written, a written notification saying, hey, this is the start date, this is the end date, and then a posting of who to contact in case there's questions and things like that. But also that, that fence ordinance was passed or two, probably three years ago, before I was on council on regards to a property on Bishop. But I noticed that that wasn't enforced with our recent demolitions. So I know the property on Kersville didn't have a metal fence until we brought it up to council a couple of times. It had an orange fence there. And then I know Janet's has a big fence that, that, that looks really legitimate, but some house demolitions didn't have those fences. So that's my big thing is safety. So that's, that's one thing I just wanted to pound through. So I appreciate your support there.
Okay, I think that there's sense of council here that there's some work to do. And I think that the people that have to do the work have volunteered to do it. So, so that's good. Anything else before we turn, turn them loose to, to get on with that?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. And it was a good topic, good discussion. And again, it's, it, it continues to be areas that any of us notice that we can tune up for, for our city going forward. So I think that's, that's very good. That moves us on to council comment on new business. And I would open it up for council's comment. Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Just completely changing gears, I wanted to bring to the council's attention, which most of you know, and to the public's attention, that the Michigan Independent Citizen Redistricting Commission, the MICRC, is holding public hearings this week, local to us. They are, one is at the Village Dome Fellowship Chapel on Outer Drive tomorrow, six P M. Thursday, six P M. at, at TCF. And then next week, Thursday, June twenty-fourth, six P M. in Warren at the MRCC banquet center. I'm going to ask the city administration to share this information on the city website. Why is this important? That for the first time, we have an independent commission redrawing our districts. And as residents, we can ask that communities of interest be held, kept together. The Gross Points and Harper Woods are separated into two legislative districts right now, and while we share many common interests. So I, I encourage the residents and my fellow council members to educate themselves on this process. And the only, the only way to influence the commission is by submitting some type of public comment. And you can find that on the Michigan.gov/MICRC website. That gives you all the information, including for the meetings. I'll ask administration to link that as well. At the League of Women Voters is also put out some educational materials. And you can go to the League of Women Voters, Gross Point, so you can go to their website as well. So I think it's really important. I hope that the community educates themselves. It will be important, it'd be very important for Gross Point Park and the other Gross Points to be, to have a shared representation because we have so many shared common interests with our schools, our libraries, the lake. We can add on a lot to that. So educate yourself. And then just one comment on, I, just going back for a second, I guess it's not totally new business, but on the DTE, we all have a lot of comments and resources that we've shared. One thing that I always do is pass all of that along to our city manager, Nick Seisland, and let him have the, whatever contacts we have. If he needs to escalate the discussion, if I have somebody he can talk to, I'm going to give him that contact person so he can have the authority and the power to go up the chain of command, so to speak. So I would ask council to share those resources with the city manager as they, as they have them or they encounter them. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Okay, I usually wait till the, till the end, but my comment was going to be along the lines of Councilmember Reed's first topic, although not nearly as well, well researched. But I wanted to, I wanted to point out the same things, but also there have, there have been groups and, who have gone on record already, both the Democratic Club and the Republican Club have gone on record indicating they believe the Gross Points are a community of interest. A little bit of quick history for council on this. Most of you would know this, but maybe not. Until, before the last census and the last redistricting, the points in Harper Woods were together and represented. And we, we got split up and as a result of the last, last go-around. And because of that, our voices have tended to be fragmented. And I believe that it's very legitimate that we are a community of interest, as was pointed out. And I would be interested, it's, it has been suggested in some of the, some of the preliminary research I did that communities can go on record as indicating that they believe they are, they form a community of interest with their neighboring communities. It is something that this council could consider at our next meeting before the redistricting is over. I don't know if that's a good idea or a bad idea, but it's something that I'd like us all to think about a little bit. Would we be interested in taking a position as a city council that we form a community of interest with our fellow Gross Points and Harper Woods for all the reasons that have been articulated by Councilmember Reed and, and what I already, what I have read from the, both the Democratic Club and the Republican Club? So that's my comment. Anybody else? Councilmember McConnell?
Oh, thank you. Just to add to that, I mean, you, at the public hearings, you can make comments. You can actually go onto their website. They have a two-on-one line to also make it easier for folks who may have challenges with internet access. And they're going all the way through August. And they're, you know, there's the Supreme Court question and census figures that may muddle things a bit, but, but there are not, you can actually write a, a hand, a letter, you can mail in a letter. So they pretty much have created every possible way for folks to weigh in. So just to echo Councilmember Reed and Mayor Denner's sentiments, I think, I'd like to, to urge everyone to get involved. I wanted to, and I don't know if Nick can speak to, I think it, one of the, I think it was the Tifa meeting, there was some discussion about code enforcement in the alleys. I know of, you know, there's some concerns from residents about that. So I'm going to elaborate on that. And then just to, unfortunately, we continue to have issues with the postal service. And every conversation that I have with the Congressman Peters' office is they are strongly urging residents to at least make a complaint so that we can sort of elevate the issue. And I think after our last meeting, we did get the information on the city's website. So I just wanted to, to remind residents of that.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Fluid?
Thanks. I had a couple of things. First of all, the communities of interest discussion, is that something that, you know, the, the mayors or the city managers among the, the Gross Points and Harper Woods have discussed at all, something that we can do as a larger community?
Well, the mayor, interesting you bring that up. The, there has been a tradition amongst the Gross Points and Harper Woods for there to be a periodic mayor managers' meeting. The pandemic interrupted that habit, and we haven't had one in quite some time. So there hasn't been that sort of discussion. There have been some one-on-one discussions that have gone across the points on a number of issues. I have not had a discussion specifically with my fellow mayors on this. I don't know if the city managers have. The city manager could comment. But apropos to your, to, to this point, there is a, a current discussion in a strong sense amongst the managers and mayors to reinstitute our, our, our regular mayor manager meetings. So that going forward, we, we have an, an opportunity again to share ideas and, and behave as a, as, as a community. So, I don't know, city manager, if there's any discussion on the specific redistricting or animates managers?
Amongst the city managers, there is not. The, the biggest topic of discussion, as I highlighted, is the recycling because a, a couple of the gross points do share the same recycling service with Green for Life. However, as Mayor Denner did point out too, it actually just came up around Robin and the mayor and managers. Would you be willing to meet? And everyone that I've seen so far has said yes. So I would presume within the next few weeks here, the mayors and managers probably will be meeting. And, you know, I'll, I'll let the, the mayor and others be able to talk further and the managers and see if we can get something done.
Thanks. I, I was thinking about that a couple of weeks ago, and I understand, and obviously it's been on hold for a while. But is that, are those meetings something where, you know, you could include those in the committee reports that we have every month? Are they mostly, you know, to keep in touch? Or I guess it would be maybe an as, as needed basis? Do, does council ever talk about an issue like this and then put it forward for the city manager and the mayor to take to that meeting to be discussed among the other gross points and a, as a, you know, the opinion of the park submitted to this larger forum? Do we ever, do we ever do that?
I guess, I guess I'm the only one that can comment on that, having actually been involved in these meetings in the past. Yeah, so I, I would say the, the, the simple answer to that is yes. There's occasionally been an issue that rises to something that's clearly should be addressed by each of the cities and gets discussed by the mayors and managers. Sometimes at this meeting, sometimes if it's an administrative item, and, and often the managers coordinate just day-to-day, week-to-week as appropriate on specific topics. But as, as it relates to things that may come before council or things that we want to make sure that the cities address with some common thought, that has come up in the past. I can't give you a specific example. But this is the sort of thing that we would just, that would be fair game amongst the mayors. And, and we could then choose to take it to each of our councils, you know, for, for example, for action if we felt that was appropriate, or, or whatever might come out of that. So the short answer, the shorter answer is yes, it's kind of topic by topic. And whether, whether it comes back to the, to the councils really depends on what the topic is.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I was just, I was just curious about that. I, and I had a couple of other things that I wanted to ask about too. Two items that I wanted to ask on behalf of residents, because there's been some resident discussion. One is, do we have any idea of the timeline on the construction projects on Kersville and when the, the plaza area will be open again and free of construction material?
You said in the traffic area, in traffic area, Councilmember Fluid?
Yeah, where the construction material is being housed behind a fence right now. It's being stored there. Do we have any idea of when that's going to be complete and that equipment is going to, is going to be removed and everything's going to go back to normal?
I would have to check with the developer, but as well, I know that some of that staging area is going to be for Janet's lunch too, when they start on that construction site. But I don't have a firm answer right now. So that'd be something I'd have to take a look at.
Okay. Um, yeah, there were some, there were some pictures posted, a lot of weeds and things like that there. So we might need to, to take a look depending on how long that, that space is going to be utilized to just make sure that it's up to par and where it should be. The other question that was put forward was about the trolley and Councilmember Hodges touched on this. So the trolley is out of commission right now because it doesn't meet the standards of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Who actually owns the trolley?
That would be the Tax Increment Finance Authority owns those trolleys.
Okay, so I would suggest that if, whatever we need to do to get it up to, to speed and, and meet the requirements of the ADA, people love having access to the trolley. People are talking about it. People are asking, you know, if the trolley is going to be available again, especially that we're kind of coming to the end of COVID. So I would suggest that that would be a really obvious project that Tifa might choose to spend some, some funds on.
Noted.
Anything else? Under council comment? Councilmember Hodges? You're muted.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out some of the great news in the community recently. One, just making sure we don't let the historic moment in our law enforcement area pass with the hiring of some new officers and the like. And congratulate Chief Gerald on his progress being made and certainly the promotions that have been made as well. And then also to call out our graduates and just give them all a shout out. And so nice seeing all of the photos and that, of families celebrating this special moment. So it's exciting to see that happening in our community. And then two, to wish our fathers a Happy Father's Day. One in particular, hopefully many of you saw the picture of our own Chad Craig on the cover of the Gross Point News in celebration of Father's Day. So this also gives me a chance to congratulate him on a great boogie too. And to just say how fortunate we are to have him as part of our team. And that's all.
Okay. Anybody else? Mayor Pro Tem Robson?
Okay, I think I can wrap this up and close the end of the being, just two quick things. I want to commend the Department of Public Safety for their recent outreach initiatives, including the Coffee with Cops tomorrow. Chief, I take my coffee black. I can bring the donuts if you don't have them. So just.
I have plenty there for you.
I wonder if we could bring him in from Luddington. Is everybody familiar with the?
I heard, yeah.
The donuts place?
And I also understand there's a chief's town hall scheduled in July. I think that's terrific outreach as well. And just lastly, to state the obvious, I think we're also very appreciative of our city staff. You see our city manager meeting in, meeting out. He's just so prepared on so many, many issues. We're just so blessed with Mr. Craig and his group, Mr. Thomas, Clerk Blayhut, all the, the line employees, the officers, clerical. We're truly blessed with such talented people. I, I want them to know. I know the entire council wants them to know how much we appreciate them. Thank you.
You're here. Okay, anything else? Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if there's any updates on the placage. Some residents were asking about that. I know a few months ago, we mentioned possible updates to Patterson Park or to Windmill Point. I didn't see it in our budget, but I'm just wondering if there's any updates that we can share.
I do not have any update at this time. That's something that I know the Gross Point Park Foundation explored and they were looking into, but otherwise I, I don't have anything at this time. Councilmember Rayland?
Okay, I can reach out to them and see if they have anything to share. And just another thing, Nick, you and I connected with a local resident that's looking to help us with a grant for the trolley. I don't know if that, I'm sure that nothing's come about that yet, but that's something to mention, that the government may give us a grant to make that an ADA compliant trolley. So that's good news. Thursday, June twenty-fourth is the League of Women Voters candidate forum for our GPP city council members that are vying for election. It'll be recorded, the, and but there's a live Zoom at seven P M. And that info can be found, found at LWVgrossPoint.org. I suggest all of you look into that to, to find out more about our candidates. The Diversity Inclusion Initiative has been moved to the last week of July. June became very busy. Our council had almost ten meetings and we have another special city council meeting coming June twenty-eighth. So we didn't want to overburden our residents as well as our council members. So I appreciate that. More information will come probably by our July twelfth city council meeting, while I have a date, looking for the last week of July. I want to thank everyone for the summer boogie. That was a lot of fun. If you missed it, it, it kind of felt like a really awesome high school dance where everyone was in the cool crowd. There was a lot of love and a lot of laughs and a lot of hugs. So it was a great environment. The weather was fantastic and it was set up pretty, pretty cool. And I want to congratulate our new officers in the public safety and our existing wonderful public safety officers. I know there's a promotion ceremony coming up. I think it's next two, Monday or Tuesday. Nick, you can confirm that, but I, you know, I hope.
Today, I believe.
What is that?
I believe it's a week from today.
Okay, so it's on Monday. I think it's ten or eleven. It's, it's, maybe it'll be posted on our city website, but that's at Tompkins. And that'd be a great way to celebrate our, our existing public safety officers. So thanks for everything.
Okay, anybody else? We'll close out council comment and move on to public comment, non-agenda items. City manager, do we have any written comment?
Mayor Denner, we have no written public comment. And I'll turn it over to Leah for spoken public comment.
Thank you, city manager, Seisland.
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. I do have two people in the queue for public comments, so I'm going to share the three-minute timer. And the first person is Cheryl, so I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your name and city of residency for the record. Please go ahead. Ms. Denman? Okay, um, it looks like I can't hear you, Ms. Denman, so I'm going to give you one more chance. Okay, Ms. Denman, I'm going to have you try again, but I'm going to move on for now. Um, Richard, you are next. Going to ask you to, I see you, you've unmuted yourself. Please state your name and city of residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Well, good evening, Miss Lee. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Well, we, we'll, good evening. Uh, well, first of all, I'd like to comment on a, a couple of things. Uh, one, first, uh, City Manager Seisland, how youthful he looks with his beard gone. And I hope he has a happy Father's Day. I know it's coming up very soon for him. Congratulations, sir. The second comment I have is Councilman Hodges. Uh, what a beautiful background she has in the background. Um, it's, it's very nice to look at that for a nice break. But the other thing that, uh, truly is, uh, Councilman Ha, I think Councilman Hodges brought up a motion about the, um, stop signs. And I don't know what happened with that. And I know you guys don't comment on our comments, but I think this is some, I'm not sure if it's still up in the air. If you guys voted on it or not, or tabled it, uh, but if it's still out there and it's not, um, finalized? Do you guys have to do that before the, uh, um, uh, this closes tonight? And, uh, if so, you know, do it. If not, I, I, I got confused and I apologize for wasting your time. Thank you very much.
Uh, just to clarify, we did, uh, have a vote on the two proposed, uh, locations for faraway stops and, uh, they were approved by council. Um, Leah?
Um, Dr. Greer, you are next. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, please. And please state your full name and city of residency for the record. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Jeff Greer, Growth Point Park. Um, I just wanted to thank council and Chief Gerald for agreeing to put stop signs at Westchester and Fairfax. Um, having lived at Westchester and Fairfax for many years, I've seen the need for this. I've brought it to council before. I've brought it to public safety before. And I really want to thank everybody for taking this action, particularly to keep our kids safe. Um, and while we're on the subject of safety, I just wanted to point out that, um, a couple of residents have talked to me about the long-term safety of the social district on Charlevoi and have suggested, um, providing the merchants with barriers that are a little more permanent to protect, um, diners who are on the sidewalk from traffic. Um, I don't have, um, much more feedback than that, um, but I'm hoping that somebody can look into that safety. Um, because as they pointed out, um, as successful as the event, uh, was Saturday night, um, you know, day-to-day Charlevoi is a through street. People drive through pretty fast and it would be disappointing to see, um, somebody hurt because they were sitting there, um, behind something that looked like a barrier that wasn't enough of a barrier to stop the vehicle. Um, I don't, I don't know what the best practices are. I'm hoping the city manager can look into that and, uh, maybe provide some feedback on that. But thank you so much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. Um, Cheryl, I'm going to have you try again. I see that you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me, Leah?
Yes, I can hear you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Smith. My name is Cheryl Denman of Pemberton Road and a Growth Point Park homeowner of 30 years. Thank you, staff, council and public safety for your service today and always. Happy Flag Day to everyone. In keeping with Councilmember Fluid's desire for more transparency, who were you referring to, Ms. Fluid, in your email communication with Councilmember Reeland? As Member Reeland stated, shall I reach out to our crew for help? Who were you referring to as the crew? What is the purpose of the crew? Finally, Member Fluid, why were you sending private Facebook messages about the Growth Point Park publication, part communicator, hardly transparent and likely a violation of FOIA?
Thank you. Um, Mayor Denner and City Manager Seisland, I have no further public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Leah. Uh, that closes, uh, public comment on agenda items. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sir's support?
Support.
Um, by acclamation, all in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, council, and have a, a great rest of the week.
Thank you.
And, uh, just as a reminder, we'll be back together again with a special meeting council, uh, two weeks from this evening.
Happy Father's Day to the fathers.